Here, Mike here, John here. Sarah's on two and a...
Here.
Excuse me. Mr. Fudge allegiance?
Fudge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, is there a motion for the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion, I got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
A little late, Sarah.
Sorry, I might feel a little delayed.
Public input, this is time and place for items already in the agenda with the time limit, three minutes please. This one is discussion possible action in reference to purchasing new Hustle mower in July of 2023.
So as you recall during our budget talks, we're going to purchase a new mower from Fat Dine Motorsports. This mower here is last year's model, however, it is brand new. It comes with a seventy-two inch deck. This, this unit is no different. The warranty is the same, it's identical to the machine if you ordered it new. The new one was about twelve hundred dollars more than what this one is. Tom has it on the floor out there. He just wants us in order for him to keep it, he wants formal action taken so that he knows that it's earmarked for us. The other thing was I did quote this identical machine online and it was ninety thousand dollars more to give it online than it would be to get it out here locally. So I recommend that you guys move forward with this purchase. This will be paid out of next year's budget, so it will be delivered July one. If there are funds available and we can swing at this budget, we will do that, but right now it's set for July one.
Do you think maybe you could talk to Tom and Sid again earlier knowing that he will have the charge July first?
I can ask him.
It's interesting to me, Seth.
Split the payments some of this year and the remainder of the extra.
I know that it's kind of tight there, but I'll see what, if I can swing it.
I mean, just see why it wouldn't do it.
I talked to him and it sounded like he would be fine with us using the mower and then paying, because he understands the budget purposes and stuff and so I think he'll be fine with it, but.
Anybody approve? Got a motion to approve or a second?
Second.
A motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 A little late still. Discussion possible action for your preference to improve the cost for repairs of the history center.
All right, so you're gonna have a couple of different packets from you in front of you, sorry. This would be the packet that says start with TNT at the top. So there should be three separate bids there. One's from TNT, one is from R and W Restoration, and one is from By State Masonry. And Becky is on and she can start this.
Hey Becky.
Hi guys. So we found two more companies to look at the history center for the paint rework. They are, one's from Stockton, Iowa, TNT is, R and W is from, still has a bid for us for doing the masonry work also. What we got was their, their real photos. It just basically breaks down the paint. Now these guys are doing different product for stripping the paint and they're talking about three layers of stripping to take the paint off. And so I'm, we're feeling pretty confident at that point. They can come and do some sample work for us to see if it's working. And it was a bid for forty-three thousand nine hundred seventy-five to take the paint off. And that includes taking it off of the stucco above on top of the top of the building. And it does include coming around the corner on the back of the building where there's probably a foot or two of white paint left on that. And then it would include the coin which is the, the wrap up west corner of the building. They would strip those and mask off the front so it wouldn't strip that paint off. They would just do the limestone on the corner. And then R and W gave us a bid for thirty-two thousand five to that. They're talking about that they would remove the paint. Whoops, hold on, I got a pile of papers here. They'll remove the paint from the Washington side and stripping the stucco on both of them. And then it describes that they'll catch all the, the paint and contain it in the water tank and that's because it's lead paint. So then R and W does, does go to say that they will use a hot water pressure washer to, to clean it off. Or then it wasn't specified, another getting used water didn't specify it, but was hot water. Both of them will use city water to do that. And one of them estimated it was about fifteen hundred gallons to do it. And then they, and then both of them will clean it all up and, and keep the lead from going into the water system. And it's all wet, so there's no dust going into the air when they're doing it.
I'll just...
Go ahead.
I was just gonna add Becky, so just so you guys have a clear picture here, BSM was twenty-nine thousand and that was for one coat.
Right.
TNT was forty-three nine seventy-five. R and W was thirty-two five. I will mention though on the R and W quote, if you look at it, I think this addresses maybe one of, I think it was Sarah maybe that had the concern. It says, "We will remove all paint from Washington Street using Smart Strip Pro. This includes foundation and coins." So to me, they're gonna remove it all for whatever it takes for them to do it, they're gonna do it at that price.
Well, and I want to clarify that both of them said that sometimes that lead paint really, the brick. And they'll be, and so it might not, it might not be one hundred percent, it would be ninety-nine point nine sort of percent. And then if there's, because if you keep trying to get it, you'll end up damaging more brick. And so what, what the standard procedure is, if there's just small amounts of that paint left in there and we're, we're okay with it. Is that then we could have them, they can dye or stain the white so it doesn't show up so much. So it looks like the same color as the brick, it's kind of a standard procedure.
So this is just gonna be, this is just gonna be to strip the paint off and turn it back to brick?
Right, right.
And then that'll have, will that have something on the brick to...
Well, then the next step is to fix the bricks. There's a whole big section on the north end that's, that's bulging out. That has, it's, it's come, it's become separated from the interior brick and the structure of the building. And there's a bunch of other bricks that are really falling apart and cracked from water coming down through the top. And then there's some that are just really eating away down on the south corner.
Do we have bids for that?
Yes, we have bids for that too. So R and W bid doing all the, let me kind of look what they said here. They'll replace, replace bricks with bricks to match as close as possible. Tuck point all defective mortar joints with the matching mortar using lime putty, which is the correct, putty did the, not putty, mortar did the, you did say putty. Anyway, as you do, as you do a newer concrete-based mortar, that starts falling, that means the mortar stronger than our soft rivets. And so you need to do a specific kind of putty. And that's all, there, there would be a, you saying putty, mortar. And that will all be tested and, and then matched. And that's all, that's all included in their bids also, in all of them. And so there's, there's cracks to be fixed and they'll seal all the coping tile out on top of the parapet wall. Make sure that's not, that's where, that's where some water's coming in and causing the cracks in the walls. Cocking, cocking between the foundation and the, and the sidewalk and cocking around the windows. Repair the flashing at the north end of the parapet wall that's, was letting water in, that's probably why it's bowed on that end. And they'll, they'll pay for all the mortar analysis and testing and then they'll, and again they'll clean everything up. And so there, so R and W priced it at fifty-four thousand three hundred. TNT priced the masonry at forty-nine four twenty-six. And BSM priced it at fifty-eight seven sixty-five.
Say that one again?
BSM was fifty-eight thousand seven hundred sixty-five.
Thank you.
So what's behind this brick?
It is a wood...
Can, can we tear that brick off and put brand new brick on?
I mean, you could, and I, I don't have a price for that. Someone, someone suggested that and it was, I can't, I can't remember. I, I didn't get a written price, it was just someone talking. I'm, I'm sure it's more.
I mean, it might be more, but if, but if, you know, it's only fifteen thousand dollars more, you gotta brand new, brand new roof. I mean, you get anyone that's, well, that's, you know, all the bricks are gonna match, you know, something's gonna be divested and, well, per se.
I'm pretty sure that the back end of that building, the back section that's got vinyl on it now is not brick at all.
Right, there's part of it that might be, but the, there's like two sections of that addition on the back. And I was just reading on the, there was a, they found an old picture where that might, that might be brick underneath there on the first part of the addition. The second part is not, it's wood.
Yeah, right, right behind the door there, that's probably correct.
Uh huh. Right, that was a much older addition and then a small one at the end was put on. But you know, so you know, you're trying to keep, you know, you're trying to keep the brick, it's, you know, it's in, it's in the center of downtown in the historic district and all of that sort of stuff. I can, I can look into and see if, you know, if there's a...
This is where I'm at. I mean, I'm all for historical stuff. I mean, if the historic society would just up and quit down there in the center, per se, and we're stuck with the building. I mean, it just seems like there's a lot of money being dumped into this. We have no guarantee that, I mean, that this history center is gonna stay there. You know, I mean, we're losing, we're losing volunteers, they don't have the volunteers that they used to.
I don't know who's going to, who's attending the history center? What, I mean, is it bringing benefit to the community?
Well, I know that last time Ann was down there, she was surprised because there were, there were like, you know, four or five people that walked in when she was there researching something. She was kind of surprised. Like her mother and her, I'm, I'm sure, you know, and especially since COVID and that sort of thing, they, you know, and I'm, you know, so I'm not really sure, you know, what all is going on with the history center. But then again, so then if you got kind of a, you know, a historic building on the corner, you gotta look good and help sell it. I mean, there's, I mean, I, I know, I know we've got to think about all of that.
No, I mean, you know, you say you got a historic building and you could sell it. But I mean, we gotta look at the money that we're gonna be putting into it to sell it and maybe in the future.
Right.
To do it, I mean, the words, you know, I mean, somebody might come in and say, okay, we'll take the building, tear it down, put up a nice apartment or a nice, real nice business underneath there and then put two apartments above it. You know, we spent, we spent a hundred thousand dollars on it and there you store it now.
It's gonna get ripped down.
I mean, I'm just, I'm just trying to be the devil advocate here.
That's, I understand and you know, so part of it is, is, is you know, that, you know, if we, if we do restore it, it's gonna be someone else that's not more, they're gonna pay a little bit more for it, aren't they? Because you know, because it's been restored and we put the money into it. And so you're gonna get someone that isn't gonna tear it down, because that's really what you don't want in the middle of your downtown is to have one of your main buildings on the corner that everyone sees when they, when they see a new metal building, you know, modern building in the middle of your historic district.
I doubt if anybody's gonna tear it down if it's maintained and in good condition.
And that's what, you know, that's what we're trying to do. The roof is in good condition now, if we can get that wall cleaned up, if we can get this wall cleaned up. Get the, you know, get the lead paint off.
I think something else, you know, they may, somebody brought up a good point, you know, there has to be resale value. And the economy is not the greatest right now, businesses are not fine businesses and so the resale value, it may be sitting empty for a long time and we're still out a large sum of money for, you know, rehabilitating it. So I think those are kind of some factors that we really need to weigh in and, and figure out what is the future.
Sure, sure.
I'd love to, I'd love to get in a real estate assessment for what it's worth to sell. What would, what would it sell for on the market?
Well, I would be curious because I understand that Vicki's building across the street from mine, it has sold, that someone's gonna put a business in there. I don't know. And it's, you know, it's comparable in the same size and has two apartments upstairs. So that's the word on the street is that that building has sold. So that's encouraging that someone's moving a business or starting a business enlistment. And so, you know.
I mean, you know, Becky, like I said, Becky, I'm all for historical because if I wouldn't, my mom would, I'd probably help me right now. But I also have to, as we, six, six of us sit up here, we have to look at this money as, it ain't our money to spend, it's the city's money to spend. We gotta do what we feel in our mind is the best for the citizens' investment.
Right. And you know, and we, and we take that into consideration is that because we're trying to do this and one of the things we're trying to do it is to, to get downtown more alive. And, you know, and to have an attractive downtown, which helps, you know, helps for businesses to be here and it helps people to come down. And you know, so, you know, now we have a, yeah, we have a little pub restaurant and if someone has bought that, I don't know what business is going in. You know, that sort of thing is, you know, that if they're, if they're being kept up. You know, over the last couple of years, you know, Styling Station, you know, moved across the street over here next door to me and that looks great now. Casey Proll has done, you know, her, her storefront and has things going on in hers and so it's, you know, it's going in the right direction.
And refresh my memory on how much grant money is sitting out there for that building?
Twenty-two thousand? Twenty-seven thousand, there's a twenty-two thousand dollar grant and then there's a five thousand dollar grant that we've gotten, so.
So that's strictly for the masonry?
Right. Right.
But when you have that kind of grant money and then we add some, I think the building's gonna be worth more than what the cities have put in. At least as much.
I would agree with that, but I mean, if it's a hundred thousand, a hundred and twenty thousand dollar building, I could just spend a hundred thousand fixing it.
And we haven't talked about the inside. I mean, this is just the outside.
You got thirty-two thousand, I mean, even if, you got thirty-two thousand, I mean, still the bid's a hundred thousand, so I mean, you're looking at us putting in sixty-eight thousand dollars into something that, you know.
Becky, when you talk to these different construction companies, did they mention, so let's say you remove the paint and you caulk the cracks, you know, to make it a match to the brick, you sealed?
The mortar, yeah.
Yeah, did, did they, without doing the masonry work, did they give you a prognosis of how long that brick would stay as it is? Or if you didn't do anything with the masonry work and just tried to remove the paint and get it to look like a normal brick building?
You know, I didn't because there are, when you got, we really should fix the, the crack. Will spill that water in and it'll keep deteriorating. And so there's, I, I think I've gotten it done, and no, I, we didn't talk about it because they instantly, you know, said, well, there's cracks there, you need to fix that because then water gets in and it's making worse, it gets in and then it freezes and then it blows them out. So they, yeah, they really didn't go there with them. And we've gotten them down to the, the, kind of the bare bones of what they would like to do with it. Cause one of them wanted to like tuck point the whole thing. And I said, okay, wait, let's just back off a little bit here and do just what's necessary, you know, just to keep this building in good shape. And that's what we've gotten, it's pretty obvious because they're all pretty close in their pricing, so they all did, they all thought the same thing. I don't know, I don't know how, I mean, we could get that lead paint off and we could, this, I mean, we could put it off for another year if somehow we could, you know, bank some money. I know it doesn't really help, you're still spending it, you know. I know, and I know there's problems with the property tax situation and all. But is to maybe, like I said, you know, bank some money and roll it over into the next fiscal year even to...
I mean, the bad thing about doing it a year from now, Becky, just like everything else, it's gonna go up.
Well, that's probably true too.
I mean, and I mean, the bad thing is we need to make a decision on this one. If we want to do the building, if we don't want to do the building, we need to do it, because it's, like I said, it's just gonna keep going up and up. What I would like to see done before we decide to put any money in it is get ahold of a realtor and say, hey, what we're doing is looking to invest practically a hundred thousand dollars, bring this back to original brick and blah, blah, blah. What do you think the building would be worth after that?
Uh huh.
Cause I mean, you know, as, as, I mean, the city owns the building, I mean, we're not in the business per se to be rent, or landowners or stuff like that, especially for downtown businesses.
Right, right. No, I mean, you know, if the history center ends up not being there, yeah, you wanna sell it. You know, you wanna, you wanna start getting some, you know, property taxes out of it and...
And I also look at it this way, Becky, is, you know, I own a building there, why in the city spending a hundred thousand dollars on my building?
Well, well, because they don't own it, you know.
I, I understand that, but I mean, you know, we're willing to put a hundred thousand dollars into a building down there. And the city owns it, but if we sell it, I mean, I seriously don't think we get our money. We might get some of it back, we ain't getting it all back.
Uh huh. No, you wanna get your, you wanna get your investment back.
I, yeah.
I stop into the history center quite often. And then in the last two or three weeks, I've never caught anybody in there. I mean, the people, the workers, but the people are not going to it to look at it. Now, there may be various school events that go in there at some point of the school season or something, but the actual person to stop and walk in there and look at it doesn't seem to be showing up, at least recently.
Uh huh. Well, I do know that people, it didn't go off of people's radar because they weren't open, you know, because of COVID.
It's gotta be consistent hours, it has to be.
Yeah, and they had, you know, they used to have consistent hours and then that all went out the window with COVID and, you know, and it's, you know, it's a lot of elderly people and they still don't want to be, you know, exposed and that's part of that problem. So it's, yeah, I mean, that's all a consideration. You know, definitely a consideration.
I can give you guys an update here of just what we spent and what we have allocated and what, you know, projection if you guys want that. So far on the west wall of the history center, we spent thirty-four thousand five ninety-six thus far.
Do you know how much of that was grant or...
I believe nineteen thousand, is that correct, Becky, for the grant for the...
Yeah. Well, it was, actually, it was, there was a nineteen thousand, and there was also a five thousand.
Okay, so twenty-four thousand of that was granted.
Right.
The rest of it was city.
Yep. And then of the library, so far we've spent, well, there's a bill out there, so that'll be around twenty-one thousand five eleven. Becky, is there ten thousand of that grant, I believe?
Yeah, I think it's ten thousand on that one.
So just so you guys are aware, what's left in the budget this year for the library is around twenty thousand. And what's left in the budget this year for the history center is around twenty-four thousand. In the state's eyes, both of these budgets are under the same category, so you could move that money for a total of forty-four thousand. That would cover any of the bids here for the painting removal. In totality though, you would need, keep in mind the grant from the twenty, the twenty-two thousand dollar grant also requires the city to pay a sixty-seven hundred dollar, is it advisement, or advisory consultant fee?
Yeah, consultant fee.
Consultant fee.
That makes sure that everything's done correctly and it has to, we have to have one for the, for the twenty-two thousand dollar grant.
So if you went the cheapest route, the total money needed would be eighty-eight thousand six twenty-six for everything. There's ten thousand budgeted for the library next year. It doesn't sound like much or any of that may be needed because they did get this other five thousand dollar grant. And then there's twenty thousand budgeted next year for the history center for a total of thirty thousand. So with the thirty thousand and the forty-four thousand, we have seventy-four thousand budgeted. So of the eighty-eight, if you took the lowest, so we're around fifteen thousand dollars shy of budgeted funds to complete both, both projects. I, the, the general, especially now, as you'll hear later on, they passed the bill at the state level, so we're gonna be taking, receiving less tax money. So it's gonna affect our budget. So I'm a little leery on spending anymore because it's gonna be tight. Now, I'll find it and figure it out, but just know that it's just gonna be tight next year for all, you know, because Parks and Rec is under that. Everything over at the sports complex, within reason is under that, but it's all under that budget. So any park equipment, all that stuff is gonna come out of cemetery. There's just several things that, that come out of that totality of that budget, so. I mean, there is money to do some of the work, that's why I asked about if the paint, you know, if we kind of made it look, because obviously right now, as it sits, it's, to me, it's an eyesore and I get a lot of comments, the way it looks now, so. But I don't know where, how far you go in and where you stop and, you know, I, I don't know that it's worth putting a hundred thousand in, but that's, that's your guys... Uh, the way it looks now, so, but I don't know where, how far you go in and where you stop and, you know, I, I don't know that it's worth putting a hundred thousand in, but that's, that's your guys' call for that.
I mean, has anybody, has anybody thought about rip all the brick off and put vinyl siding in the whole wall? I know how ugly that would be, but.
I know.
But it would get the building into a safe and sellable format that, you know, that we could put it on the market and.
If it's right in the middle of the historic district, that would be a real shame to lose that. To have that.
I guess what I would like to see is, let's wait a month, maybe go out and see, talk to some realtors, make a bid on it, tell them how much money we are going to invest, what we're gonna do. And see how much building we're afraid for. A-approximately, you know, tell them that we're gonna put this on, this, do, do this, do this, do this.
So after, after that works done?
Then we'll make a decision, no, I mean, that, no, no, yeah, just go out and tell the, uh, the realtors, say, hey, we're looking to put in this, this, this. This is what it should look like after it's done.
Right, to do this.
How much is it gonna be worth then?
Okay.
Does that sound all right, Becky?
Uh, what, what, what's, what's the increase of?
Yeah.
The, the assessed value at that point? What does it increase if we develop that? That's what I find out.
Yeah, what, what's the assessed value right now and what's the assessed value after spending eighty-two thousand dollars fixing it?
Um, can we do it as?
Go ahead, Becky, go ahead, go ahead.
Um, now, we're also looking at is that, that, well, if we wait too long to do this, like if we can do this before the next council meeting, because they're filling up their schedules.
Yeah.
And, like, one of them said that, that they've got a spot for us in May, in June, I think, to do it, and I'm not sure about the other one, but they're, you know, they're look, they're looking at their schedules getting filled up. They estimate it's gonna be, you know, three to four weeks to do this, and so.
Becky, I know that you mentioned something, the la, the last group that did this, it was, you know, they kinda blamed it on, we didn't have the best weather. So have these guys mentioned anything about?
About that sort of thing? Yes, that's why both of them are using a different product, and yeah, they both said, no, they wouldn't do it until, uh, June would be the earliest, maybe May if something was, you know, if the weather was really good for that, but both of them said, you need warm weather, and that's why they, they, these two new guys have, um, they're using a completely different product. And that each of them are talking about doing three layers of stripping. Three separate stripping processes.
It looks like to me, the property assessed at one, one sixty-eight last year on the assessor's say.
Well, I'd, I'd like to see us at least move ahead with, uh, stripping.
How much did the city, um, pay for the building to begin with? You know, do you remember? Does anyone remember that? I don't.
I don't remember.
John, I've been on council here for.
Looks like a hundred and forty-five thousand if it was in two thousand and seven, sounds about right.
Um. That's what, that's what it was assessed at, but what did you sell for?
No, that's what I'm saying.
We paid one forty-five.
The sale dated on one, two, oh, seven was a hundred and forty-five thousand, and I assume that. And it was by an exempt organization, so I assume that's us.
Yeah, I see.
Tell me again?
One forty-five. And it was by an exempt organization for that, that was the city.
I would guess that's the city, yeah.
Well, I, um, did, I, I, I don't have a vote, so, um, but, uh, you said you wanna try to move on, is, with two weeks, giving up, you can hold a couple of realtors?
I can try, I know the one that helped us out before is out of town, but, um, I don't know when he's back, but maybe the following week, he's gonna pencil out quick. I mean.
Um, yeah, because any, any realtor should be, should, um, give you an assessment, you know, free of charge, and any of them, they have to. One of those things.
I think we could have, yeah, we should be able to get a.
Is that all right, Becky, if we come back to the next council meeting with all this stuff and then what a realtor would tell us and stuff? They give us two weeks, basically.
Yeah.
You know, 'cause I mean, it's, it's, it's hard for us to make a decision right now, 'cause I mean, we're just seeing this stuff for the first time.
I know, I know, I, I would, I would have been very surprised if you guys could have made a decision when you're just, you, you know, you've got one in the packet, you've got one a day. And I would have been very surprised if you would have been able to.
Yeah, so I mean, it's, it's hard for us to make a decision, hard for me, it would be hard for me to make a decision, we're gonna be spending this much money. I mean, just throwing it out there without knowing it was coming, per se. So if you just give us two weeks, that'd be the. March.
And I, um, and I, I, I will tell you that they'll, um. If we, like, if we say, okay, we're gonna do the paint and then, you know, then we're gonna look at, you know, doing the masonry another time, that'll be more.
Yeah.
They'll, they'll end up coming back with a bid that will be more because they have scaffolding and setup and those things.
I mean, when it's, when it gets done, I will look at whatever we decide, they're gonna be here once, I mean, whether it's just doing one thing or doing it all. I mean, it's, yeah, 'cause I mean, I agree with you, it'll be more down, come back and tuck point everything and re, and paint everything and just to take it all off and just leave.
The other issue on this thing is, is that we have virtually no participation going in and out of that door, front door.
Well, that really doesn't have anything to do with the building, though.
Pardon?
That doesn't really have anything to do with it.
We can separate the section of the building from the building.
Becky's here for the building, she ain't here for the history center.
Right.
Right, I, I, I can't help them out there.
Yep. I think we should get the history center involved too, to answer those questions, and maybe they could do some fundraising, private fundraising, uh, to help out too.
Uh, that's possible too. I know they used to be good at it.
One thing I wanna check with you guys, so in the packet you saw the estimate for the caulking of the windows. So it's fifteen hundred plus whatever the cost is for the lift, we're projecting about a total build no more than twenty-five hundred. Um, these quotes for the, for the masonry part include caulking the windows. Um, the gentleman who came out with the estimate that we received, the fifteen hundred one, said it doesn't appear they've ever been caulked, so. I don't know if waiting's a big deal, I know that the event that caused the wind to come through was, if I remember, it was snowing and it was fifty-five mile an hour winds that day, so.
Right.
I think that's an anomaly, but I just wanna know, do you wanna wait on that too, I would assume, instead of doing this twice, or how do you wanna?
I as well. I would think you'd wanna do it all at the same time if you're gonna do it, definitely scaffolding goes up.
I just, when we run through these, we noticed that all these include caulking the windows, so, and I don't think, if you go back and tell them amended without the caulking, it's probably not gonna equal fifteen hundred less, so. I think we're a bigger, bigger bank for a buck week.
Yeah.
Yeah, I assume it makes sense to caulk at the end.
Good. Not to mention the stripper could pull that out too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I, let's go, Becky, go.
I'm sorry, what?
Are you gonna say something else?
Um, no.
I got one question for you.
So you said that we, they could come out and try it in a little test spot?
Uh huh.
I mean, is it beneficial, we're waiting two weeks anyways, to tell them to come out and try it? So they can actually?
Well, probably, it's probably way too cold, yeah.
Yeah, I mean. I mean, we don't have any guarantee really, but.
I could talk, I could talk to them and see if. I could talk to them and see if there was, you know, some way they could enclose something and, you know, to keep it warm, is, is the trick.
I, I mean, I get there's, there's problems there, but I mean, we're basing, we're basing a lot of money without seeing, you know, what it can actually do.
Yeah. Previous, previous attempt failed.
Yes.
And I'd love to see some success before we throw all the cash at it.
Would make it easier for them to say, yeah, let's do it, and they can see it working.
Well, for, yeah, yeah.
Right, um, I do know that the, that the product they're using is much stronger, um, I believe it's probably the product we used on our house. When we stripped all the paint off of our house and it came right off.
And you let that all hit the ground?
I'm eaten, I'm, I got a vegetable garden plant right in that, like, ground. No, I don't.
I hear you.
But they are, and the, but both of these guys are talking about, um, and they didn't, they didn't put it in here specifically, but, but both of them said that they were, they were looking at doing three, three layers of stripping on, on the building. So that's a big difference too.
Yeah.
So any action on this?
Stronger.
We need to undo.
I think the action is to table it a little farther.
Not table it?
I say we table it until we can contact a realtor.
Yeah. And then put it back on the agenda?
Yeah, we've already discussed.
With, with two, with two.
Bids?
No, put it back on the agenda in two weeks.
But, do we have, do we have a fixed bid for that work?
What do you mean?
Yes.
Do we know exactly what it would possibly, say yes, we're gonna do?
Yeah, I got.
Yeah, there's three, there's three bids.
Yeah, we have three, we definitely, definite bids, but.
Come back, come back March thirteenth.
Okay.
And then, you know, we'll make a decision, then, Brandon, I have some quotes hopefully for, for realtor things we could get out of it, if we were to have to close the next day, you know.
Right.
I mean, so.
Yeah, and that, and that'll give you guys time to, you know, come and look over these and over them and see what, what it's all about. Um, now, TNT provo, um, some photos, um, of what they have done, and, um, R and W, ah, because they thought that it was on their website, but they found out today, when I went and checked their website again, that their photos are not coming up, so, um, I will, I will send that information when that, when that gets fixed. I'll, I'll let Brandon know and he can send you their, their, um, website address and you can go and see what they've done. Uh, 'cause TNT had some good shots of a building that they took the paint off of, that was pretty impressive. And so I can get that to you, so you can look at those.
Okay, so, basically what we're gonna have to, is we'll put it back on the agenda in two weeks, Brandon's gonna go, try to find, try to get us a couple bids of, obviously, think the consolability for in case it would just close down.
Uh huh.
That sound fair?
That sounds good.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much, Becky.
Thanks, everybody.
So Sarah started the table, I need a second and a vote for that, please.
Um.
Second, second, Sarah said, and Doug said?
Yes.
What, how, Doug said?
To table it for the next meeting, yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Late again.
Shush.
Discussion possible action, and refers to approving quotes for new pavilion and sports complex.
All right, um, this will be the other packet of info in front of you. So what Travis and I did is we reached out to three companies that have done work in our area or that are currently doing work in our community, and, um. So this is for the pavilion, this will be on the soccer field side of the sports complex, um, about the middle of the parking lot, just south of there. Um, this is gonna be the same exact size and the same exact layout, pretty much, as the pavilion at the park. The only difference is it's not gonna be cinder block, it's gonna be, uh, wood and steel, um, metal, so. Uh, and then on the backside of it would be the, um, additional, uh, maintenance storage shed that'll go all the way across the back. Um, so the bids you have in front of you are apples to apples bids, um, this is gonna include, um, concrete and then the building, so on top of this, there will be fixtures that we will, um, install, water sewer, which we will do that in-house. Uh, concretes, well, actually, I'm sorry, concrete will, uh, will be included in this, these bids. Um, what am I missing? Electrical, electrical, we'll have to make one bid, we'll have to do a bid for the electrical for the building. So, um, as you can see, the, the quotes there in front of you, um, I was projecting somewhere in the ballpark of seventy-five to a hundred thousand is what I was allocating for this, and as you can see from Dutch Brothers, uh, the total cost, um. The concrete's gonna be around fourteen thousand, eighty dollars, and the doors, overhead doors, will be, uh, thirty-three hundred, and their building price is thirty-eight, two hundred for a grand total of fifty-five, five eighty. Uh, keep in mind, outside of that, we're gonna have water, sewer lines, whatever the cost is for the, the PEX lines, which shouldn't be much, and then we'll have sink, toilet fixtures, and, uh, countertop. And then the electrical, so I think I'm very happy with where this came in for the Dutch, um, Dutch Brothers construction. And Travis and I would like to see you move forward with that, if you're interested, or we're here to answer any questions we have.
Do we have any history on Dutch Brothers construction?
They have done a couple, a couple buildings out in the county that I've actually walked through. Their work is. I, I, their work's just as good as anybody else's.
And they have done, in county work. They can put up a building, especially they've killed anybody.
Yeah, I mean, it's pretty, pretty straightforward.
Brandon, did you, can you tell me what it's made out of again? Did you say cinder blocks?
No.
No, the, that's the only difference with the one at the park.
Okay.
That one is not gonna be cinder block, um, I will say though, that there is a, a much larger concession stand that is actually designed for the middle of the ball fields on the next phase. That will be much larger, and my intent for that is to make that cinder block, um, just for a little more shelter and whatnot.
Sure.
Um, also.
The reason I asked was the cinder block is, you know, letting people know that they could buy a, a block of that pavilion and maybe raising money that way, you know, if people wanted to purchase a family block.
That'd be a great idea for, great to start, that, that to start us do fundraising for.
So, I, I just, but if you're not doing cinder blocks, I'm trying to figure out.
There's still ways to be that.
A, a different route that they could purchase, you know, but whether it's local businesses wanna purchase, or, you know, if this was purchased and we could obviously come up with some signage out there that, you know, these blocks were purchased by, or whatever, just an idea.
I mean, we could do some signage, I mean, let's say we build this, we could do some signage saying, this is what we're gonna build in the future, you can purchase a block with your name engraved on it.
Yeah, yeah.
Papers, yeah, all the papers idea, we could do that.
Yeah, I've talked papers before, yeah.
So I know, I know that, um, we didn't have, I, or at least I didn't have the cinder block idea, but I know that going into that next phase, we had talked about that, like on the sidewalk leading in.
Yeah.
But.
Yeah.
The other thing is, on that next phase, once we get to two ball diamonds, I would assume that our next purchase would be to build that larger concession stand, so then that way you have concessions right at the ball fields instead of across the street, because temporarily, until everything gets underway, that's where it's gonna be, at least for a year or so, maybe two. Um, but that might be, you use those bricks to, uh, fundraise for that next phase for the next three ball dimes, where there's not money allocated.
Yeah, no, I, I, I just was thinking some way that we could, you know, pass out the cost to, you know, people that may be interested in doing that.
Sure. Um, I will say this, the, the intent, or my intentions, and I've kinda kept Travis in the loop with this, I would really like to have this building done um, prior to sauerkraut days, and have the ice cream social out there for sauerkraut days, and then have the fireworks out there, it's a much safer place, it'd kinda be the grand open. It's a much safer place, it'd kinda be the grand opening of that area. So, that's, that's my intentions, is what I was hoping for. Um, the Dutch Brothers said that they could come in the middle of May, and basically what they would do is start, um, putting in the posts and then we would do the, uh, water and get all that in place and then do the concrete, and then they would come back and.
We're gonna do the concrete?
That's the plan, but we also have.
I know a couple people that could do flower.
No, I understand, but we also have a, uh, watering project that's gonna be going. So, I told, I, the, the hope is, he can come and set the posts and we have a window where we can do it. And that was, that's our hope, but I don't, that's why there's a price in there for the concrete, just in case something goes south.
I know a couple, you know, guys that can do it.
So, and I'm not opposed to getting volunteers and doing it on a Saturday, or a couple Saturdays, so.
What do you guys wanna do? Do a motion.
Well, I, I'll second that.
We didn't do first one, I mean.
I thought you said so moved.
So.
I thought you said so moved.
If you guys wanna proceed, um, I don't know how I can do this wording wise, but Dutch Brothers, the bid for them is thirty-eight two hundred. And then the, the.
But we also have to jump on the concrete?
Yeah, I'm trying to, that's what I'm trying to figure out, we got the concrete, the doors.
Except the bid of thirty-eight two hundred not to exceed fifty-five five eighty, 'cause that would be all of it then.
Except the electric, we can come back with the electrical and, um.
'Cause I would assume Dutch Brothers isn't doing electrical.
Correct.
So, we'll have to do that later on. Yeah, I've got the wording for that then.
All right.
So, John, you were about to?
Ask, ask.
What Chris keep this?
Sarah already seconded it, she's good.
Then motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Are you ready right there?
I know, I'm ahead. I'm on.
All right. Public hearing for chapter seventy, traffic code enforcement, I need motion to go to public hearing.
Motion to go to public hearing.
Go under public hearing, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We want a public hearing now, seven fifty-two.
Um, so this is for, um, the parking tickets language. I believe the wording is in quintuplet form, uh, that's no longer the way we issue parking tickets. So, Chief Shannon's here to add anything else.
Eric, you guys really got the easy end on this side of it, and we're just changing one word for the most part. And, uh, Mount Williams has got a little more extensive work to do on their ordinance, but that's gonna, it sounds like that's gonna move forward without a whole lot of head cheaters, so. I'd recommend approval.
Isn't there just an article in the newspaper about this? Any else anything to say? We got a motion to go out of public hearing.
I'll make a motion to go out of public hearing.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
First reading of ordinance oh one, twenty-three, updating chapter seventy, traffic code enforcement.
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance zero one dash twenty-three.
Any second?
I second.
Sarah?
Aye.
Nate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Possible suspension of rules and placing ordinance on third and final reading. Uh, motion to go on third and final reading?
I know you guys don't like asterisks. Yeah, 'cause it's one word, it's not gonna change, it's processed, that's just the way it is, so.
Good. Sarah?
I make a motion to fast forward and suspend the third and final reading.
A motion by Sarah, I'm second.
Second.
I'll second myself here. Sarah?
John, aye.
John?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Nate?
Aye.
All righty.
That's just, that's just suspending the rules, we need a motion for the third reading now. So, I'll make a motion to approve the third and final reading of the ordinance zero one dash twenty-three.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, you gotta do roll call.
You got a roll call.
Oh, yeah, you gotta roll call that.
John?
Aye.
John, or Mike?
Aye.
Nate?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Thanks, Sarah. Set public hearing for fiscal year twenty-four budget hearing from April tenth, any motion for that?
This is just to repeat the last time, the bill passed, so now we basically have to redo the budget. So, um, they extended it, uh, the new numbers come out, I believe it's midnight on March thirteenth. So, if we set it for April tenth, it's due May first, this will allow for an extra meeting in case we need to move the campaign.
So, what did, what'd they do?
Uh, they adjusted the rollback, so in a sense, the cities get less money, um, tax money, so. I don't, it's not, I don't think it's a significant amount, but it's less nonetheless, so.
I'll make a motion to accept the public hearing for fiscal year twenty-four budget to April tenth.
I second that motion.
The motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Correspondents?
Um, I know there was a question last time about the bill for D and D, so that was paid, and then you'll see the check from the ambulance service to show that we were reimbursed for that.
That's all of us here.
And then, what's that?
It's all of us here.
And then, um, you see the other day, they sent out a email that we received, a tree grant, um, through Lion Energy, for four thousand dollars, so that's included in there.
Can please be, blame it anymore.
Um, I'll be honest, I've filled out, and Robert has helped, but we filled out so many of these, I don't recall where this one goes, so I'll have to. This just was.
Not, not on top of your bills?
This was, yeah, I believe this is the one in the parking, um, and this should help on the areas of town where we're removing trees for the water project, so. I did talk to Travis before we moved forward with it and he felt comfortable with that, so. Anyway, always good to get that. That's it.
All right. Ports, city engineer.
It's no more.
Apparently, that would mean there's no report, huh? I'll be courts.
Uh, I know they're working with Becky to get going on this water main, getting stuff ordered and everything, so we can have the ground running by the committee. The snow cap has gone on and off the last couple weeks, so hopefully those days are numbered. The only thing I have knew that I wanna get you guys to start thinking about is I have a conference I'm going to and I've been in talks with a couple other cities that are doing newer developments and they're not allowing plantings in the parking anymore. Um, they've been doing it for a while. What they do with their grants is they'll set aside budgetary money of two or three grand a year, go out, find residents that want the trees, they'll buy the trees, and then make them plant them, water them, everything. But then that keeps the trees out of the parking, they're not having to trim, trim the trees, they're not having the garbage trucks hit them, they're not buckling sidewalks and having the conversation of, well, it's a city tree, but buckle my sidewalk. So, I'm waiting to find more out on that and see if we want to start shifting towards something like that, if and when we can start a new development.
That means we wouldn't be able to qualify for trees forever grants?
So, like this tree forever grant, if it was solely in the city right of way, then no, we wouldn't.
Or it'd have to be for the park?
Yes, so. And it's, like I said, it's pretty new, I mean, it's new to me, they've been doing it for a while, and I'd like to, I'm hoping to get more and more.
I mean, the Trees Forever program's a great one, I've always hated the restriction about being in the parking or city property. I don't, I don't know if anyone's talked to Trees Forever about changing their stance on that, to allow front yard, front yard trees that they would help buy.
Have to, 'cause more towns are doing this than not.
'Cause it used to be, they could plant a tree, which makes more sense for energy.
Yeah.
Conservation, to shade your house.
I've got, I've got one in my, in my yard, clearly.
Well, it'll turn out now when they do the road.
No.
Put it in the curb gutter.
Put it in the curb gutter before, yeah, right.
So, that's all I have.
Make anything for Travis.
Thank you.
I did. Becky said that the stones are blown out on that Bruce Center.
Stones are blown out.
Out of the history center somewhere, or blown out.
Yeah.
Look at them.
Okay.
At their back, we gotta get a couple can.
For safety use.
We can't, see, we didn't know about them now, so.
Yep. I'll get with her tomorrow.
Just speaking. Sergeant Reddick?
I do not have anything other than thank you guys for approving the mower, and that's it.
And the pavilion, geez.
Pavilion.
Please pardon.
You have nothing, other what's in the report, does she have questions?
Any hand over the deck? Ambulance?
Uh, did you guys get the report, by chance?
Yeah, we did.
Any questions on that or, or anything there?
Good.
So, now we were just updating Mosa again, what was it, Thursday, Friday?
Until la- last year, did you set a record of how many total calls you had?
Yeah, over two, two hundred from the year previous, so we were up thirty percent. So, our last, twenty-one was our last highest, at seven oh four, and last year we did, was it nine eleven or nine twelve? So, I, I anticipate.
I think nine eleven sounds familiar.
What's that?
Nine eleven sounds familiar.
Yeah, that's not one we usually like to talk about a lot, so, but, um, the nine, somewhere around there. I anticipate it's gonna stay there, hopefully, for the next couple of years before we start growing again as we start to see mutually shifting, um, staffing regionally get better. However, there's not a lot of, of light at the end of the tunnel for that necessarily, but we're, we're hoping, so.
Any questions, Jacob? Fire chief?
Well, another thing I have fire related is our St. Pat's Dance is, uh, Saturday, March eleventh, out at Tin Roof Hideaway, uh, from eight to midnight. It's our fundraiser for a couple of their packs.
Fire chief? City administrators?
Um, still working with Lynn County for rental inspections. Um, I talked to Lisa from YTT, I had mentioned last time, she had the redrawing done of the sports complex, of what it's gonna look like. I did meet with her this week and she wants me to, uh, which I had already sent back, but there's gonna be some boxes and language on there to show like, what's the future phase, what's now, what's coming soon, so that way everybody can look at that, we'll get it re-signed down here. Um, met with, uh, Lisbon Insurance, reference our EMC renewal, got everything squared away there. Been working with, uh, Travis, trying to get bids for the, and Becky for the History Center Pavilion. And then, uh, we will be having a P and Z meeting, hopefully next week, uh, to adopt the comprehensive plan. So, EC cog reached out to me that that is ready to go, uh, they received some feedback from community members and they're ready to present, so. That's been a long time coming and look forward to that.
When's that scheduled?
I'm sorry?
When's that scheduled?
Uh, hopefully next week, we're pushing for Tuesday at seven, and then after that, it will come to council and we'll get it sent to you, so. Yeah, I believe there is a link on the city website and on the Facebook page, if you wanna go in and take a look at it.
To the new comprehensive.
Yeah, yeah, thanks Bill. Other than that, this is all I have, I have to answer any questions.
You have blood drive?
Yes, uh, March fifteenth, um, we'll be doing a blood drive in honor of my brother at the fire station. So, if you should reach out to Julie Lake, um, to schedule a time to come in and do that. Uh, I know it's spring break, so for those that can't find a slot that works for them or can't do it that day, um, we're gonna be doing another one out at Tin Roof in April. Um, I don't believe that date is set yet, but we'll, uh, update you further when I have that, so.
And if the city employee wants to do it, we will, they don't want that one, that we pay for. But that, that's all right for council.
Eddie?
I'm, I'm perfectly.
That was my fault, sleep in the chair.
Had to go home.
Safety first. Will they do it at the end of their day?
Yeah, I think it'd be the end of the day. Yeah, I wanna do it first thing in the morning.
Yeah, I hate they have a loopy in the.
I'll second it at three o'clock, and then even if they go past four, they're still punching out at four.
Thank you.
So, do?
That's all I have. Questions, I guess, maybe?
Counselor, board. Uh, Christina?
Uh, I have an area clerks meeting this Wednesday at Wyatt's that I am in charge of, and then I will be on vacation the rest of this week, so.
I need a vacation.
I'm not taking you with.
What? I'm, I'm fun, I'm actually pretty fun to be on vacation with.
I know, but you're COVID, so.
I'm not COVID yet, I'm trying to stay away from people because I was around her.
All right, any questions for Christina? Who wants to start, Nate?
I don't have anything tonight.
Mike? Sarah?
Um, congratulations to the wrestlers that, um, made podium and all the ones that made it state. Um, our two champs, Brandon and Wyatt Smith, so congratulations to them. Um, I really don't have anything, I really think, you know, um, focusing on some fundraisers for the, the sports complex should be definitely in our radar, and that's about it.
Good, sir, John?
I'd just like to say about the History Center, it's more than just dollars and cents there, it's, it's a key spot in our community that we want that building to, to look good. And I'd request that, uh, we invite the History Center to be at our next meeting to answer some of the questions that were brought up, and what their plans are for the future, and what kind of numbers they have for visitors. That's all I have.
All right. I don't have anything, so, we adjourn.